We're thrilled to welcome you to the second of a series of four programs where we're helping to introduce our new, 12 new Portland City Councilors to the community. Before we begin, please just take a moment and silence your cell phones, if you would please.
I guess I should do that.
The City Club of Portland is proud to host nonpartisan public forums, debates, and research to help Portlanders make informed decisions around elections and public policy. City Club is committed to providing space for people to gather and engage in civil, civic dialogue to enhance respectful discussions and positive change. Tonight's one such example. Members make City Club run by providing ideas, leading conversations, doing research, planning programs that address issues important to our community and state. To support our mission and to participate directly in City Club's work, become a member. You can do that by visiting pdxcityclub.org/membership. And let us know how you would like to engage. If you join tonight, we have a deal for you. You can take $40 off your membership fee. And when you're ready to check out, there'll be a place that says, enter that special code. And that code is, we're NEW, N-E-W, all caps, 40. New 40. And you'll receive a $40 discount on your membership fee. Many people are responsible for developing tonight's program. A special thanks to Bobby Regan and Robin Denberg, City Club Governors, who are co-producing this program. Also thanks to Sam Metz, a Program Committee Co-Chair, and to Kayla Kennett, the City Club Communications Manager. All have been working hard to work out the details for tonight's program. We also want to thank our partner, The Standard, and our season sponsor, AARP Oregon, for their generous support. You can thank them. These programs are not free for the City Club, but we offer them free to you as a public service. We also want to thank our community partners, KGW News, X-Ray FM, and the District Four Coalition for helping us reach new audiences for this important conversation. Now, please mark your calendars for several upcoming City Club events. Our next two events are going to be a continuation of the introduction of the new councilors. These programs, like tonight's, will take place on Tuesdays at 6:00. We'll meet District Three Councilors representing inner southeast Portland and a sliver of northeast Portland on February 25th. And we'll wrap up this series on March 4 with District One Councilors representing the outer east side area of the city. Now, to tonight's program. With the adoption of the city's charter changes, Portland moved Portland away from its longtime form of government. Using new ranked choice voting system, Portland voters elected 12 City Councilors in November, with three councilors elected to represent each of the four new city districts. These City Councilors were sworn in only a month ago. Tonight's program features City Councilors from Portland's District Four, which covers the entire west side of Portland, as well as some inner southeast areas out about to East Morland and Selwood. This district includes downtown Portland, as well as Forest Park, the Oregon Zoo, many of the city's beloved arts venues, and Oaks Bottom Wildlife Refuge. District Four residents have comparably higher incomes than the other areas of the city and fewer households with kids. About 13% of District Four residents have lived here for a year or less. Notably, Portland City Council has historically been overrepresented by councilors who have resided in this district. Our new District Four councilors are Olivia Clark, Mitch Green, and Eric Zimmerman. You may applaud. It sounds like Jeb Bush.
Please clap.
Each will tell you a little about themselves in their opening remarks. We're excited to hear about their hopes, dreams, and plans for District Four, but also for the whole city. And for councilors, thank you for sharing your time with us tonight and the community. Our program moderator is Sophie Peel, a Willamette Week City Hall reporter since 2021. Sophie has also covered state politics, including reporting in 2023 that led to the resignation of a former Secretary of State. She previously worked for NPR in Georgia. We're pleased that Sophie has agreed to moderate all four of our Meet the News Counselor series. We want to thank, yeah. We want to thank those of you who submitted questions when you registered for the program. Sophie has been given all of those questions and has incorporated many of them into the themes of her own questions. At the end of the program tonight, we'll also have a short live audience question opportunity. That's question with a question mark at the end of your statement. At the close of the program, you're welcome to stay around and meet the new councilors yourselves, and also meet with City Club members who are here. We'd be happy to talk to you about what we've been working on and what our hopes are for the future. Now, join me in welcoming the new District Four City Councilors. Sophie?
I'm a little taller. I also have heels on, so that helps. Let's see. Okay. Well, thank you, John, and thank you, City Club of Portland, for having us tonight. I think we're all really happy to be here. So, just a little bit about the run of show. First 20 or so minutes, I'm going to be asking some specific District Four questions. And then, second 25, 30 minutes are going to be for citywide questions, and then we're going to transition to some live audience questions. We'll probably get to around three to five of those. Also remember, the councilors will be staying after the show for about 30 minutes, so if you don't get your answer, your question answered, you can bug them after for a little bit. So first, I'm going to ask each of the councilors to just take a couple minutes to introduce themselves. If you could tell us just a little bit about your background, and then not why you ran for office, but what you think you bring to the council that others don't. I mean, don't throw your colleagues under the bus, but tell us why you think you're the right person to be on this council. Councilor Green, let's start with you.
Thank you. So, a little bit about me. I grew up in Portland. We moved here in like '87. I'm not going to use all my time on the long background, but my dad was a welder, proud union family. I'm the first person in my family to go to college. I love this city tremendously. I've probably lived in every neighborhood in this city, and I currently live in West Portland Park, which is a very, very southwest part of the district. And I love it. It's like there's coyotes in my front yard and deer. I have a background as a working economist. I have been a soldier. I have been a burger flipper and a roofer. And I am married with two dogs and two cats. So, it's a little bit about me.
Thank you, Councilor Clark.
You wanted me to say what?
Oh, yeah. What do you bring to the council?
Yeah, so I kind of gave away the lead there, but I'm an economist. Sorry, Olivia, you told me to stop saying that. And I think that's important because there's a certain amount of fiscal stewardship that we're going to have to bring to bear on this very urgent budget thing, and I'm eager to share my skills in that regard.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Sophie. And it's so great to see so many people that I know in the audience. Thank you all for coming. It's a full house. It looks great. Olivia Clark, District Four. I, like Mitch, I'm the first person in my family to go to college. I grew up in my dad's diner, was a waitress with the rest of my family, working there after church on Sundays, and learned a real work ethic. So, that's where I come from. I actually got a scholarship to college and then came to Oregon to go to graduate school to get my PhD in sociology, which was like, what was I thinking? But I learned, coming to Oregon, that I was really an activist, and I wanted to get things done. And I saw problems that I wanted to solve. So, that's where I'm coming from. I have a whole background. My whole career has been in Oregon. I've been a public and private advocate on a variety of issues, everything from affordable housing to the environment to good government. I worked for three mayors in the city of Salem. I formed a nonprofit to do farmworker housing. I eventually ended up working for Governor Kitzabur in his first two terms. I was his liaison to all the cities and counties around the state, worked on a variety of issues. And then I came to Trimate with a kamikaze mission, and that was to find the resources to build out the light rail system. And I also found the funds to build the iconic Silicon Bridge and the green line and the orange line. In my spare time, I'm a, I was, a long-distance cyclist. I don't have any time for that right now. And this summer, I actually had the opportunity to sing at Carnegie Hall. So, I'm really, really happy to be here. I can't wait to sink my teeth into the issues that we have before us. We're just getting going. We're just starting our committees, actually, this week. Yesterday was the first of my committee, which is Transportation and Infrastructure. Mitch is also on that committee. So, I'm really anxious to get going and solving problems. Where I come from, really a place of, let's get back to basics. I want to fix things. I want to really restore the assets that we have that we've ignored in the Portland metropolitan area for way too long. So, we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Zimmerman?
Thanks, Sophie. Hi, everybody. I'm Eric Zimmerman. I am really thrilled to be here. I actually used to be on the board at City Club, and so now being a guest is an interesting experience. Thank you, Bobby. I was born in Portland. My whole family is still in Portland. My sisters have moved back since they went to schooling and whatnot, but born in Portland, I'm the product of a Portland Public Schools teacher. My mom taught, actually, in my district at Stevenson and then at Dunaway for an entire career. And so, my connections, I feel like I've had since preschool in a lot of parts of this district. I went to school at the University of Portland, which is where I had an interesting entree into an important part of my life. I'm also a soldier, like Mitch, and I went to ROTC and became an officer, where I served as Battalion Commander, Lieutenant Colonel in the Army. And I did that as part of our Oregon National Guard, where I got to have kind of a concurrent career. And I think it's been a career that has helped me in local government. There is nothing like learning how to make decisions than that type of career over the last 20 years in our world. And so, I think that is part of what I'm also bringing to City Hall. For those that know me, I've worked as a Chief of Staff at the county for two county commissioners, Julia Brim Edwards and Diane McKeel. I've also, when I returned from overseas, I had an interesting assignment. I returned from overseas in 2022, and I saw the state of Portland, and I went straight to work at City Hall to start the recovery of downtown. And that really was my entrance into thinking, I'm going to run for this seat, because I thought we had pointed the ship in the right direction, but we certainly had not crossed the ocean in any means. And so, we had a lot of work to do. So, I'm a gay man, a member of our LGBT community here in Portland. I think when you add the Army to that, it becomes a unique thing, and so I share it. I was, you know, part of those "don't ask, don't tell" questions back in the day, and I think that a few folks took notice that I had, at times, a sharp tongue for certain things that were just right. And so, I've appreciated, especially a number of people in the room who have helped me be in the right room at the right time to make some changes. And so, when it comes to what I'm bringing to City Hall, I think I'm probably known for, I've worked in the bureaucracy and in cities long enough to know when I'm being BSed, and to know what's important, and to know what we can move past. And so, I'm trying to bring that sense of urgency into everything that I'm doing at City Hall. And for me, that urgency is improving our public safety, tackling our street camping and homelessness issues. There are a lot of things the city does, but there are a couple of critical things that should get most of my attention. So, that's what I'm bringing. Thank you.
We're going to start with one very fast, light, and fluffy question, because the rest of them are a little bit darker. What is the one hidden gem in District Four that you think your own constituents might not know about? Whoever thinks of it first.
Might not know about? I was going to say the Willamette River, because I live, but everybody knows about it.
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'll just say the Yamhill Pub. I know that's a little bit of a gritty spot. Some of you may know it, maybe not recently.
You know, I was going to do another pub. I got to not do a pub. We can't be all pubs up here. You know, I think, actually, I'm going to go with, I mean, one of my favorite parks is, barely anybody knows it, but it's Berkeley Park over off of 39th and Caesar Chavez and East Morland area, where there are trees there that any kid can find themselves in some sort of fantasy world in terms of climbing and making a world for yourself. And I did when I was in preschool, and I love that place still today.
Great. Okay. This next question, I'm going to have each of you respond to this one briefly, if you can. What do you see as District Four's most pressing issue? Not necessarily citywide, but specific to your district. What do you see as the most pressing issue? Councilor Green, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I think it's the downtown vacancy rate in our commercial properties.
Great. Brief. Nice.
I would actually have to agree with the downtown trying to turn it around, but I don't want to just copy you. I think a lot of the things that I heard, and it's not unique to our district, is the 911 response time, that that's, public safety is a huge issue for a lot of us in the room.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Zimmerman.
Those are great. So, a different one and important for us is, I think that in our district, we have a concentration of what other districts feel maybe more spread out. We have a concentration in a couple of key areas. So, when you see open-air drug dealing, and it's all happening at Fourth and Washington, that is affecting us in downtown, and we get a lot of attention for that stuff. And so, I think that's a problem, and it's also an area where our district, both regionally and nationally, is kind of representing the narrative of Portland in a way. And I think that's really important, because our recovery matters for the whole story.
Exactly. So, Councilor Green, you brought up, actually, the topic of my first question, which is that our downtown is our tax base for this entire city. And yet, the latest findings still show that our vacancy rate in office space is at 35%, which is just as bad as it was the year prior, and the year prior, and the year prior, back until the beginning of the pandemic. The former city council did, you know, take some measures, create some incentives for offices, businesses to keep their offices and their headquarters downtown. Didn't move the needle a whole lot. Same thing. They created a number of incentives to have commercial buildings convert to residential buildings. I think we have two buildings over four years that have decided to take that step, and it's actually very, very pricey and a lot of times just doesn't pencil out. That's all to say. The former city council made some good faith efforts, and it has done very, very little. What do we do about that? How do we actually bring back traffic downtown? Councilor Green, we'll start with you.
It's a great question, and I'll be less brief than I was last time. This is actually, I think, where I'm going to start as a framing goal for the Arts and Economy Committee. I think, you know, as the work ahead of us, Councilor Ryan and I co-chair that committee, you want to be very focused on this work. And for us, the problem is working backwards from our budget crisis. Well, we have a budget crisis because we have a revenue crisis. Well, we have a revenue crisis because everything's concentrated in downtown, property values, and so on and so forth. And so, I think that before we go and change policy and maybe extend further tax credits, if that's even possible, I think we need to do some studying. And you think we need a new assessment of previous decisions to determine what worked and what did not work, because we have to really get the best return on investment for our dollars right now, because they're scarce. But I'll just tell you off the cuff, one of the things that I think we need to have a serious conversation about is, why do we not see asking rents correct and adjust to the new market conditions? You know, if you remember your Economics 101, if you have excess supply relative to demand, prices are supposed to fall. We're not seeing that in our commercial rents, and there's a reason for that. It's a longer discussion, but we need to, if we're going to talk about public support for recovery, I want to talk about that with these commercial property owners.
Councilor Zimmerman, I'm going to actually skip to you on this one, and then I'll come back to you, Councilor Clark. But I'm curious, you were with former Mayor Ted Wheeler when his office was really working on trying to bring people back downtown in some of those efforts. So, you saw a number of those efforts that didn't always have legs on them. What do you think is the right way to start this recovery?
Well, I think, I think we have started the recovery. In fact, while I don't know that we improved those numbers, as, you know, Sophie cited those, I do think that there were a lot of efforts that tried to stop the continual bleeding, and the difference is that we've held in a position where other cities have already started to recover back, and we're holding. And that's concerning, right? I do think that we were on a nosedive when other cities were holding, and so I think we brought ourselves up to holding. But we have a reputational problem. We have, of course, a vacancy problem. We have a problem in downtown specifically, because it was designed in a way that doesn't include a lot of residences. The day-in-and-day-out foot traffic, just going to the market, going to a show, going out for a run, stuff like that, doesn't exist as much in downtown as it does in the Pearl District, or even South Waterfront, who had, as a district, they recovered more quickly than downtown. So, if we're also the downtown, we represent the narrative for the rest of the community and nationally. I think we, a couple of things I've talked about is, the city will not solve the conversion of office buildings to residential, but the city should be in a position that when somebody comes to us with an idea to do that, whether it's a current owner or a new owner, we need to be in the position to say yes. Give it a try. Go for it. Take the risk. Instead of having the permitting bureau be allergic to yes and more comfortable saying no. So, that's really important, because I firmly believe that the market will start to solve the downtown problem, but we have to be enabling that market to happen. And I don't know the magic wand to weave at it. The other piece is that we do hear that when, when other Portlanders, not downtown residents, other Portlanders or people in the Portland metro region come back to downtown for an event, a show, dinner, they are reporting a better experience than what they were expecting, and they're reporting a better experience than what they had the last time they were here. That matters, which means we keep putting our efforts toward things like the Winter Light Festival that's going on right now. We keep making sure that Portland's living room lives up to that mantra, because those things do make a difference, and we share those stories amongst our friends. And it is a long slog. I do believe it's going to be a long slog, but the city needs to be in a position to always say yes.
Councilor Clark, I'm going to actually ask you a very similar question that sort of tags off of this. So, I think another really important part of this discussion is return-to-work policy. And I think, as many of you know, Mayor Keith Wilson has decided not to bring city employees back downtown full-time or even four days out of the week. I think the requirement right now is 20 hours per week. I think some people are a little loosey-goosey with that. But I hear a lot of, both big and small business owners downtown say, if the city brought back its employees, we would bring back our employees. But everyone's a little scared to dip their toe in the water. Where do you see the city's role in bringing back its employees? Do you think it's of import, or do you think it's sort of overblown?
No, I think it's of import, Sophie. I think it's very symbolic, and I think the mayor's on the right track by asking management to come back this spring and April, and he waited a year because of the labor negotiations before he asked everyone to come back in a year. So, I think we're definitely on the right track. Now, can I riff off these guys a little bit? So, I just wanted to say to Eric's comment that I've lived in Oregon long enough to see the pendulum swing back and forth several times. Some of you remember in the '80s, 40,000 people left the state. They came back. More people will come back eventually, but as Eric said, I think the market will take care of this. We're going to help it. And one of the other things I wanted to riff off Eric said is that we have, we stopped being the city of yes. The more, I mean, we've been at this for a month, a little over a month now, and I've just realized, and listening to people, learning about it, that so many of our bureaus are like, talk to the hand, you know? They're the Bureau of No. And we have to change that. And something I want to disagree with you, Mitch, on is that I don't think we need any more studies. I think we know what to do. We have plenty of plans that are sitting on the shelf. We don't need to study anything. I think we know what we need to do. You know, I lived for 20 years in Hillsdale, and my next-door neighbor was Greg Higgins. And all of you know Higgins Restaurant. Very wonderful place, very successful, until now. And he's really suffering as a small-business person downtown, because there's not enough people coming downtown. Sure, they come for, you come for the symphony, maybe you go to the art museum, but if there's no activation in the downtown at night, people aren't coming to Higgins anymore. And I wouldn't be surprised to, if Greg decides to retire at this point. But we need to act, keep activating the downtown, keep getting people, and the market will eventually solve itself.
Great. Thank you. So, this is a little bit wonkier, but I think it is increasing in importance, and I think it's an issue that has gotten some higher-profile coverage, really in recent months, honestly, which is the Critical Energy Infrastructure Hub, which is a six mile, I believe it's a six-mile stretch of land along the Willamette that 80% of Oregon's oil basically passes through or is stored.
90%.
And it's an existential threat, because we don't know when the big one is going to hit us, but we know it's going to happen at some point. And when it does, that hub presents a huge catastrophic issue for us. And I think just right now, officials are really trying to grapple with, what is the financial responsibility of that look like? Is it on the city? Is it on the state? Is it on the businesses that store fuel there? How do you manage that financial risk? How are you guys thinking about that? And should that burden be placed on the companies, the fuel companies? And should that burden be placed on the companies, the fuel companies? Or should government take the brunt of that cost? Councilor Clark, let's start with you.
I would say yes on the companies. I think they, they owe us something there. And I know the county has been wrestling with that issue of insurance. I think that a lot, well, all three of us have been out to Linton, have toured the tanks, have learned about it. I didn't really know about that as a citizen until I went out to Linton. And I think a lot of people in Portland don't realize the threat that exists in our community. And there's four ladies in Linton that have really done all the groundwork to build an incredible coalition to, to teach, to, are they here?
Yep.
You're kidding. Hey! All right. The Ladies of Linton. Take a bow. These, these women have built an incredible coalition and, and, and community engagement to teach all of us about the risk that's out there. So, I applaud them. And I think all of us now know it. And we have a variety of different committees that are working on aspects of that, trying to sort through whose responsibility is what. It's a complex Gordian knot of what level of government, you know, oversees what piece of it. So, it's a puzzle that we have to work through. And I think we're, we're all committed to doing that.
I think there's a fair amount of agreement on this issue amongst the three councilors. So, we're actually going to move on. We're going to move on to citywide questions. Obviously, the thing that is looming largest right now over all elected officials is our ginormous budget deficit. It's $100 million and counting, which is, I mean, a lot of times, government will say they don't have enough money. We really don't have enough money this time. This one is real. And we are also probably going to tack on another seven to nine million because we just reached contract agreements with, to labor unions. So, we're looking at probably 110 million or more of a budget deficit. This is a tough question. This is the question, I think, of this year. Where do you look for cuts? And what specific bureaus are you looking at most closely for where there may be fat to trim? Councilor Green, let's start with you.
I enjoy starting this one. Thank you. Sophie, I think the last time you asked me this question in front of a camera, the number is $27 million. And it was for the, the endorsement interview. And I think I was skeptical that we were going to have a budget gap. I'm like, well, let me see when we get closer. But now, I'm, you know, it's staring right in the face. We definitely have to close that gap. I think the first thing that I would say is I'm eager to see the first proposal that's due out at the end of February. That's going to have the city administrator's hard look at the results of all of his bureau directors saying, here's what we can live without, here's what we need. I think that's the basis to start. I don't want to prefigure any cuts. But what I will say is that there seems to be a significant amount of growth in the administrative overhead in our city. And that's an area that I'll be looking at just across the board. I will say that I am not in favor of across-the-board cuts. I think that, you know, you need to be intentional on how you use your public dollars for a specific service delivery. And I want to emphasize service delivery. So, when we were thinking about cuts, I don't want to cut so deep into some areas that we further take away our capability to deliver basic core services to the city. Because that, that will set us back. That will be costlier later. And so, that's going to be my framing is saying, we got to win back the trust of the public. You got to see roads being paved. If there's things that we can't live without, you know, we'll, we'll put that on the back burner. But we're going to make some tough choices.
So, Councilor Green alluded to sort of what across-the-board cuts mean. So, in, in recent budget years, when we have had a deficit, the police, fire, and then emergency communications bureaus have been exempt from those cuts. This year, that may not be the case, just because our budget hole is so large. But I think that's going to be a very active and delightful debate on the council in the coming months. Councilor Clark, I'm curious where you stand on, I mean, Councilor, yeah, yeah. Councilor Green alluded, obviously, to the administrative bloat. Are you with him on that? And where else are you looking?
Yes, I am with him on that. I believe that our former style of government is a part of the problem there in that when you had a politician managing a bureau, the temptation was to keep shoveling money at that bureau and not hold them accountable. I think this new form of government will hold them accountable and will have oversight and will find where that extra is. And just like Councilor Green, I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing the budget that the city manager and mayor provide to us. But I want to say one thing to your comment, Sophie, is that no, across-the-board. In fact, I, as a public safety advocate, would prefer to see additional money going into public safety so that we can reduce those response times, so that we have more presence on the street, so that we can get rid of Fentanyl Friday in the district, those kinds of things. I, I really want to see us actually invest more in public safety. It's going to be at the sacrifice of something else. I'm not sure exactly at this point what that something else will be.
So, the, the public safety bureaus, I think those three bureaus make up, correct me if I'm wrong, if anyone knows, about 40% of our general fund. So, it's, it's a huge chunk. And so, exempting those bureaus does mean that much steeper cuts are going to have to come from elsewhere. Councilor Zimmerman, do you think cuts to public safety are inevitable to some extent? Or do you think that they should be preserved?
No, I don't think they're inevitable. I, I think that it is possible. In fact, when the mayor responded to some of our colleagues about having the public safety bureaus go through that exercise of a five to eight percent cut, I gave a response to him and the city administrator that I disagreed with that. Because I think once you start building that product, it's a way of really making it come true. And I'm not sure I believed that it needed to happen. The reason I feel that way is if, if you, because I do, I agree with, with Mitch in terms of if you do across-the-board cuts, what you're signaling is that nothing is a priority. And, and I am a firm believer that we prioritize and the core city services that we choose to deliver in the new fiscal year, we do at a level that we can be proud of instead of delivering everything at a C-minus grade level, right? And so, that's the difference here. But in the old form of government, the city of Portland, unlike every other city in Oregon, has never had a core services discussion about what lines of business should we be in, in the tough times. I've been a deputy city manager in two other cities. We have those conversations because Oregon's tax structure makes you have that conversation. And Portland has not had it. So, I think that is important. We have 26 bureaus who have created little support networks that generally would be a centralized service. So, that's my long-winded way of saying, no, Sophie, I don't think it's a predetermined cut has to happen at public safety. I'm not there yet.
Sure. And I, I want to press this point a little bit because I think it's hard to say where you want to cut if you don't want to cut from something else. But when push comes to shove, we have a huge budget hole. So, where are you guys looking, other than administrative bloat, which I think everyone recognizes, there's probably some savings to be had there. It's not going to make up $100 million deficit. That's a much bigger hole. Where are you guys looking and thinking about, maybe we could drill into this specific area or bureau and potentially cut some services?
Do you mind if I start?
Sure.
So, I'm, I'm the chair of the Finance Committee for the city council. And so, I am going to share with you what I have shared with the mayor and the city administrator. And the reason I say that is, I have given him my guidance and where I'd like to see him work this budget to get a balanced budget. And it wouldn't be, at this point, appropriate for me to line item this group or that group. I have to wait until the real budget season. So, I'm usually a pretty straightforward guy, but I need to follow some laws here and, and respect the chair I'm in. But the guidance I gave to the mayor was, I don't want 26 versions of HR to exist across the city. I want one version of HR to exist. The same could be said for communications. When the city communicates with the public, I want it to be the voice of the city of Portland, not the PBOP voice, not the water voice, not the police voice, not the civic life voice. That's incredibly important. These aren't areas that I would have called fat. These are people who, who answered the call. The bureaus set them up in a system, and they are doing great jobs. But after we consolidated, no consolidation in this new form of government has happened below the mayor or council level of our government. None whatsoever. The only consolidation that happened was in your elected representatives' offices. So, that's not good. And that's the guidance I gave to the mayor that I recognize he's going to make some tough choices, that some I'm going to like, some I'm not. But if he gets us to a pyramid that makes sense, I'm going to generally be supportive. And I've told him a few things that I think are really important to preserve. But you have to prioritize something. And I think it's clear where I'm prioritizing in terms of public safety and our homeless cleanups and things like that.
Thank you. Councilor Clark, do you want to speak to that?
I would just add that as the chair of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, there's not a lot of general fund there. There's a little bit, but they've been asked to look at cuts as well. And I'm going to be very sensitive to that because I'm very much back to basics. Exactly what Eric said is what are the basic functions of government? It's to keep us safe. It's to give us clean drinking water, to keep our river safe from when we flush the toilet. It's all those basic kinds of things that I want to protect. But I'll be, I'll be watching with great interest to see what the mayor and the city manager have in store for us.
I'm glad you pressed the issue a little bit. So, last year, in the adopted budget, we provided $30 million of general fund revenue, or general fund to prosper Portland for overhead, sort of X outside of Tiff District expenditures. It's a lot of money. And we've got $100 million budget gaps. That's a third of that. And so, I'm going to be looking at that area specifically because I think in the spirit of back to basics, like if we are putting off filling a, a pothole or repaving a street, but we are willing to sort of engage in a grant-making exercise that may or may not generate new economic activity, I think that moves us in the opposite direction of where our voters are at right now. And, and so, when I said it's study earlier, I regret, I think I meant to do some oversight and say, was, did this pay off? But that's what that committee's for, and that's what I'll be looking at.
Great, thank you. There is, I think, sustained frustration with sort of the state of our streets in Portland. I mean, we have a very persistent houselessness issue that affects both constituents and also the people living on the streets. It's a, it's a tough way to go. And I think there's, the, the city and county have done a very, very poor job of dealing with that issue in any really meaningful way, despite there being a whole lot of money floating around out there. I think oftentimes, as a reporter, I always hear that it's not as easy as you think it is, and the issue is very complicated, which I do understand. And I also think, when we have, I think we're at probably 500 million right now in SHS dollars that have been expended or that are going to be expended in the next year, there, we need some movement. We need to see something. The county is our social services government. The city doesn't, doesn't do that. However, we are part of the Joint Office of Homelessness Services where we do put, I think it's around 40 million annually into that, into that joint office to help tackle the issue. I'm curious, as city councilors, where do you see, where you guys can have leverage with the county, but also in the joint office to actually make really meaningful change on our streets? Councilor Green, let's start with you.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we have the, when we're in this budget cycle and we're asking for, the cities, the mayor's asking for money for this, you know, for, for his efforts, we get to ask really probing questions there and kind of drill into, you know, getting some answers from the joint office, getting some answers from our, our new homelessness position there. I would like to see some engagement on that. But I have a lot of fact-finding to do. And I don't frankly understand how things are so complicated. I was at a Salvation Army last night, and the folks who are volunteering there were saying that, you know, they got to wait on hold for 30 minutes with two-on-one just to interface with that. And I mean, I'm going to be looking at sort of understanding how, how that system is broken and how we can smooth that out. But I look forward to seeing what my colleagues think too.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
I don't have an answer to how we deal with the county. I would, I would punt to Eric on that. But I do want to say, I'm going to pick out somebody in the audience here who today brought a really great idea to me, and that's Darlene Garrett from the District Four Coalition, who mentioned, why don't we go to the neighborhood associations, all 32 of them in District Four, and ask them to engage in where we could be housing people, where we could set up shelters, that they know their neighborhoods better than, well, you know your neighborhood better than anybody else does. Why don't we ask for, for neighborhoods' help? But as far as the county goes, I, I feel a lot of frustration around the fact that we've spun our wheels for so long. We don't track people. I mean, I used to think it was easier for me to get on Airbnb and find a place to stay in Mongolia than it is to find a place to stay if you're, if you're homeless at night. Because there's no, there's no system. There's no tracking. But Eric's going to take care of that. Because Eric, Eric, Eric has a new job as a city councillor, as our liaison, and he'll describe it to you.
So, Councilor Zimmerman, for those of you who don't know, has had the, had the pleasure of being both on the city and the county side of the issue. And not a lot of people sort of get insight into, into what's happening because it's, in recent years, I think it's gotten better. But in the past five, 10 years, there's been a lot of blame thrown from the county to the city, into the city, into the county. Eric, Councilor Zimmerman, sorry, I got to break that habit.
That's okay.
What's wrong?
Take it away, Eric.
In 30 seconds or less.
Yeah, great. That's the problem. We have to solve things in soundbites. So, a couple of things. So, I'm sitting on the, on the council's Housing and Homelessness Committee. And today, I asked the chair of that to bring forward a deeper dive into this new IGA that the city and county have, have signed. Because even on the inside, I'm only so much familiar with it to what was signed by the previous council. And it's time for our council to get up to speed with exactly what we're asking of the county in terms of our, what we expect in terms of deliverables or changes in metrics, so that we know and we can answer fully in the years to come whether or not that relationship continues. The, the public in Portland, the Portland region, is incredibly generous, right? The amount of money that, that SHS has raised for this out of, out of the pockets of everyday Portlanders is a lot. And I think we have to show a difference on the ground, on the street, in people's experiences, or they're going to lose faith in that. And Metro would have no chance of passing that today if they came back for a renewal. And, and I do think it's important because I do see a path. I do see a way in which we can get ahead of this. Couple of things I think need to happen. Portlanders have got to demand a change in the dogma that drives the, the industry around service and nonprofit providers and what we consider to be important. And remember that, that Portlanders are also one of the clients in this equation, and that really, really matters. It is okay to say, there is a line in the sand when it comes to how permissive we're going to be about certain types of behaviors. And it is also okay to acknowledge that while a number of, of people who are homeless on Portland's streets are homeless not by choice, they are homeless not by their own volition, that they are in deep need of addiction's treatment, mental health treatment, or, or assistance in keeping a place to rent, there's another group of folks who are doing everything they can to avoid the shelters that we are creating and avoid longer-term housing. And we have to call that out and segment that off and really attack that choice so that we can help the most vulnerable. I believe that strongly. Not a lot of politicians have talked that way. But I think we are approaching the point where Portlanders are going to revolt on the SHS. And we'll be left to do this with no money in the coffers in that sense.
Can I, can I ask Eric a question? So, Eric, are you implying that we have an enabling culture?
I, she's a terrible and wonderful teammate all at the same time. I, I am, as you get to know me, I, I'm going to work hard not to step on it with the way I speak. But sometimes I get a little direct. And I'm not trying to use any language that, that spikes anybody's feelings, but I've been on both sides of it. I have also seen a significant change in the perspective that is driving the county's work and driving the city's work. And so, it is taking hold. We just need to continue, Portlanders, to think about it. It was, I returned to the county in 2023 when Julia Berman Edwards took office. It was my third day, and Sophie's paper brought me an article that said we were giving out foil and straws for fentanyl. And I texted her colleague. I said, I'm going to kill that within three days. And he joked, he goes, that's the county, brother. There's no way. You're not going to kill that program. And with Commissioner Berman Edwards and, and me as a team, calling out silliness where it exists, it actually was a voice where Portlanders were like, this makes no sense. There is a level of, we've gone too far in our mission creep of, of trying to help people that we actually were doing a lot of bad. And we, I'm using we, collective we, where we hear from people who've come out of addiction, who are in recovery and will tell us that was a terrible strategy. And we have to admit that when those terrible strategies lay on our, on our table and stop them.
Yeah. Can I, can I just tag on to that a little bit? Because I've got a
Yeah.
I tend to usually have a different view than, than these two on, on this issue. But I think that there's a lot of overlap, and I just want to highlight that area. I do come from the kind of housing-first and, you know, evidence-based, more compassionate end on this. But I think we can all agree that when you see a silly system, you should flag it and say, why is this there? And, you know, one of the things that comes to my mind is that when folks are freezing on the street and need and they and they say, I'm ready to go inside a shelter, we can't transport them. Our method of transporting them is calling a lift? That's that's absurd. That I mean, that's, these are public dollars. That's it should be a public function. So I'm very interested in strategies where we can say, we got a transport fleet. You ready to go? Let's let's get you there, zero barriers.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one more question before we go into live audience questions. So this one is taking a little bit of a step back, and I know we hate to talk about this, but our new president is handing down a lot of executive orders that are already affecting the state in some way or threatening to affect the state. And we're not really sure how they're going to trickle down to Portland if they are and what that will look like and when that will happen. But I think it's sort of an existential threat that everyone is very, we're just on, we don't know what to do with it. We don't know when it's going to hit. I'm curious, and I think I've I've talked to a couple of you guys about this, but how do we sort of strike the balance of not giving, you know, not kind of stoking the drama that I think Trump likes, not overreacting to sort of his proclamations if they're not actually going to have an effect on Portland? We don't want to become, you know, his, he likes to beat on us. And I think we are always like one, one sentence away from that. How do we not stoke the fear? And how do we also take the the potential threats very seriously of how this could affect our city? How do we? How do we thread that needle? Counselor Clark?
Well, we are tracking every federal dollar that comes into Portland so that we know what the risk is. We're getting prepared for that. But I think we're also, I don't think we're being overly dramatic about anything. I think we're really kind of keeping our heads down. I've talked about all of the council members, whatever differences we have, that we really link arms, that we show that we can work together, that we're successful, we're solving problems, that we do the same thing with the county, with Metro, with the state, that we have arms linked so that we're prepared for what's coming. If if anything comes, you're right, Sophie, we don't know if anything will come, that we don't overreact and we don't have a lot of drama. I mean, it's really hard for all of us, I think, for me, every day to read the news and to see, you know, what's the latest fire drill in Washington DC. But I think we're, I think we're remaining calm at this point, but we're we're prepared.
Counselor Zimmerman or Green, any anything to add?
You know, I'm going to, there's 12 of us on this council, and we've got a mayor as well. So I am recognizing that we are each going to approach this in in different ways. And the approach I'm taking, the one I'm talking about, is that I think as a community, we swung at every pitch in the first term. And in this term, I'm, I, the way I'm going to hold myself is I'm going to, I'm going to pick very deliberately on which balls to swing at this time. And I am, I am serious about it. I know that that will let down some folks, given the issue of the moment. And what's interesting in this less than a first month is that the moment changes by moment. And so you're on to the next thing. My greatest goal is that we do not see a return to any level of rioting or of federal police having to take up a position on the streets of the city of Portland. And I will do damn near anything to prevent that from happening, which I do think is not incentivizing making us another Fox News meme as a city or what maybe whatever way you might take that. So I'm being very deliberate. I think that we, as a community, over the last couple of years, we've had a few flashes in the pan where the public was very supportive when the city or when the police stopped actions that started happening because we weren't exactly sure what that demonstration was going to turn into or if it was already. And we nipped it quickly because I think collectively Portland is not ready for a return to what we saw previously. I hope that the federal side takes some note of that so that we don't become the thing they want to gain whatever off of. But I think that's good for Portland. I think it keeps us safer, and I think it keeps our residents who are, every single day, I'm getting a text about something relative to the rumor mill, about an agency at a certain grocery store or a place of employment. It is scaring the hell out of folks. And I'm taking that seriously, and that's the path I'm going to try to do to minimize that impact here.
Yeah, I mean, I think I've got a lot of, I definitely have a lot of faith in my colleagues to use their judgments to to sort of say, what's what's the best leadership stance I can have in this moment? I mean, because we need, a lot of people are scared. I know that the council president and the mayor, I think, have set a tone that that's right, that we need to kind of slow down a little bit and maybe think about how coherent our messaging is. But it's more, from my perspective, it's more than just slogans right now. It's about stepping back and saying, you know, how do I support the immigrants in my district so that way they know before there's an issue? You know, we we can sort of get ahead of the fear mongering and the kind of self deportation that might happen. That's a big issue for me. I also, I also think that no matter what we do, Trump has his eye on us. And that's something I kind of hold in my mind at the same time. So I think he's got it out for us anyway. And we can be, we can be cautious, but eventually, you know, we're always going to be a target. And so we need to be thinking about how we are going to position ourselves should that happen. But, you know, I agree, I don't think the activist community is in the same place that they were before. I think, you know, a lot of people burned themselves out in those years and realized they had no effect. And so I'm, I'm pretty interested to see how strategies might change to a more pragmatic and, and, you know, practical solution.
Great, thank you. Okay. We are going to move into live audience questions. If you have a question, please start making your way up here, and we'll just hand you this mic. Really quickly, if we don't get to you, again, the councillors are going to hang after for about 30 minutes, so you can bug them then. Also, please keep your question, including the preamble, to 30 seconds. We want to get through as many as we can. And also, please introduce yourself when you ask your question.
And if your question is just for one of us, tell us.
Yes, also that. And we'll probably try to limit, yeah, only one of them will respond. I will be the, I will be the gavel holder on that one.
Oh, you get to hold it. Okay. Hi, I'm Sarah. My question is kind of spinning off of the last two questions that were just asked. I do a lot of homeless outreach, and I speak to a lot of people of marginalized genders, people of color, who are much more hesitant about accessing our shelter system because they've experienced harassment and hate crimes there. So how do you plan to still protect those people in the wake of a federal government that is trying to crack down on those types of equity initiatives? I don't really know what to call it.
I'm happy to. You know, I think that we have made a move toward the small pod shelters. And what I've learned from the community is that that of all shelters, when you have a room to close the door, that that's the most empowering. And it is also a way to be on a site, maybe that you may be, you know, not one of many, but unto yourself, and that having that door to close is an important thing. We've invested a lot of money in a variety of types of those and affinity villages that I think are important. And we have also hired providers who have been directed to provide services in a way that allows people to be empowered and also be themselves and not targeted. And those who do target, they find their way out of those shelters.
Thank you for that question, by the way.
Hi, thanks all for your time tonight. My name is Greg Adams. I've lived in Portland for about three years. I moved here from Southern California. I'm a member of the Arlington Heights Neighborhood Association, as well as a small business, owner of a small business. I'm curious, as it relates to the budget deficit and financial decisions as they go forward, how do you prevent decisions that, in terms of the the fiscal strategy for the city, on preventing further tax burden being placed on small businesses and the residents at large? And a follow up question, and I know Sophie's done some reporting on this, can you comment on the current state of the PFA program as it relates to the tax revenues that have been collected, the implementation of the program, and how that relates to the current budget deficit?
Can I take the first part of that? You can take the second part. I just wanted, thank you for the question. I think we're really sensitive to the tax burden, if I can speak for all of us. Some of us were actually working behind the scenes to, can I say it, to actually postpone the Parks Bureau levy because of what exactly what you're saying. So I think that we're all in tune on that. I think the governor, in fact, asked us not to proceed with any kind of tax increases, at least for three years. I think we're honoring that. I hope we do. And give us time to go through the budget cutting process and then determine where we go from there with our bureaus or with the parks or whatever. But you want to take the PFA?
Yeah, this may not be satisfying, but the Portland for All taxes is not related at all to our budget deficit problem. That's a county level tax. My my general principle is that it's really not great when you have a tax that accumulates faster than you expend it down because people start to say, well, what what the hell's going on here? What was this for? I will also say that per the sort of language of that ballot initiative, they're on track to meet those goals. But I would love to have a conversation with the with the folks there at the county to say, can we go faster? Because we do have the, we have the expenditures and families are kind of waiting. So, yeah.
Hi, I'm Heather. And I heard you talk about wanting to control protests. And I, it didn't escape my notice, and I certainly hope it didn't escape yours, that the day after the inauguration, there was a protest in downtown Portland. And I want it to be clear to everybody that the only five people arrested, none of which had violence, were all transgender youth. And so how is Portland and the city council going to, with Portland's long, proud history of activism and support for marginalized communities, going to protect our youth that are out there expressing their First Amendment rights?
I actually had friends at that protest. I wasn't aware of the arrests. I didn't know that. They didn't tell me. Wow.
Okay, obviously, we want a little more. So I appreciate hearing that, right? That's, it is very helpful. I also, I have a lot of faith in our, in our police chief, Bob Day. And I believe him when he tells me that he is going to allow as much First Amendment's expression to occur, but that when the law is broken, when vandalism happens, that he has taken an approach that is more strict than we've seen in the past, and that he is going to enable First Amendment expression, but there is a line when it crosses over. And so I don't know the details and I, and, you know, even before we took office, because we were, we were also on that ballot. But I appreciate it. I will ask the chief about that to ensure there wasn't a targeting there. But I am very appreciative of his approach because I think that approach is clear for all of Portland to understand the differences and where the line is.
Well, I would just say that I'm, I'm hopeful that our new police accountability structure will be able to take up questions that I think are outstanding around, you know, if it's, if it's structural, if there's a systematic bias. I think that's what that commission's for.
I'm John Russell. I've lived and worked in this district for 50 years. As a preamble to my question, I hope you realize that an enormous group of grassroots people, all the, all the neighborhood associations and all the homeowners associations have endorsed the restoration of the color. Question is, did you realize that this started with a historic agreement among the county for 200, or the metro for 200,000, the city for 200,000, and an equivalent amount in private sector donations?
No, I wasn't aware of that, John. Oh, I don't think I was aware of that, but I totally support your efforts, John, on the color, and you know that.
It did happen.
Yeah, good, good.
I was told last time that I should lighten the mood a little bit. So I'm going to sing. No, just kidding. I'm not going to sing. I have a fun question. Now that you guys have taken office, is there something that you're doing for fun or a new hobby you've taken up? Or do you? Do you punch a wall? Like, what's your, what's your relaxation thing?
Really?
So I've gotten back into home improvement, which I used to hate because I was compelled to do it, and I had to do it. Now I'm like, this is a nice little way to, so I put a new sink in my bathroom this weekend, fixed a toilet, added a bidet. And that's great.
That's great. Well, I'm, I'm actually trying to escape through reading, so boring. But I'm reading about the Third Voyage of Captain Cook, which is really an amazing book. And it's
Very niche.
It doesn't have a happy ending, but the the author is actually coming to speak in Portland at the, I think it's the Literary Arts Series, or no, the Historical Society Series. So it's a great book, everybody. But it is, is kind of a sad ending.
Sorry, this has inspired me to share my current reading, since I think it's wonkier than yours. It's called Persian Boy, and it's about Alexander the Great's eunuch.
Oh, my God.
It also does not have a happy ending.
Wow. Okay, how many readers of the Willamette Week are in this room? Can I just see some hands? Okay. So I just want to ask Sophie, since she likes to report on my snacking choices in her paper about my Doritos, which one she'll choose?
I get to, I get to eat one?
You get to have one.
Just one?
You can have them both.
Just kidding. That's very nice. So I wrote a story about, I think it was a story about the council president vote. It was a very, it took like six hours. And the one thing I wrote about Zimmerman was that every time I saw him in the hallways, everyone else was like running around and, you know, having these little powwows. And Eric was just eating the whole time. He ate lasagna, he ate Doritos. So I wrote about it because I was like, if I had seen him do anything else, I would have said that, but I didn't. And I don't think I have
That makes me sound like I wasn't involved.
I don't think I've ever received more feedback on a story than I have about that specific line.
We're desperate for humor.
Well, thank you all, John. I think you've got some closing remarks.
Well, that concludes our program. And I want to thank Olivia Mitch and Eric for a robust discussion tonight. And for those of you still waiting, they'll be around, so grab them when they step off the dais here. I also want to thank Sophie for a terrific job again tonight. And to our, to our sponsors, The Standard and AARP Oregon. And I really want to thank all of you for being engaged in this discussion, for being polite, for asking good questions, and being ready to engage with these issues. I have to tell you, City Club has been engaged in many of the issues you heard tonight. For example, we issued a report about 10 years ago on earthquake resilience, and it included the Linton area and some recommendations for that. So might want to dig back in those reports. That's what we do. On the revitalization issue, stay tuned. We've got more information. If you'd like to engage in those issues, many of which you've heard tonight, consider joining City Club. The next event is going to be on February 25th of the Meet the Councilors event, and that'll be District Three in Southeast Portland. Again, thank you for being here. Remember, when you go to the code to to join City Club, put in NEW, N-E-W, all caps, 40, and you'll get a discount. Thank you. Good evening.